Okay, good morning. Want to welcome everybody to Sedgwick County. Those that are joining us online, those on Facebook, those on YouTube, and all of you wonderful people that are joining us here in person. We're glad you're here today. Looking at the order of business, when you walked in this morning, you could have got a meeting agenda packet. All the items that we're working through today, we've got a lot of really wonderful things, with a lot of wonderful people that are here today. So, we're excited about this agenda. If you're ever curious about some of the supporting documents that we as the commission work through, there's a good 600, 700 pages of it online for this meeting today. It makes for great reading material, but you can find that at sedgwickcounty.org. So every single item here, you can read all the supporting documents that we have access to. Want to encourage you to look at that. Before I call the meeting to order, we always like to acknowledge some special guests that are here today. I see Mayor Ashley Coleman from Keachai. Welcome, we're glad you're here. I also have a special guest, one of my constituents from Valley Center. Daniel, it's his 10th birthday today. He's a 4th grader. Wave, Daniel. A 4th grader from Valley Center and a media school. He's a stud. We're glad you're here today, bud. 10 years old, what a day. Okay, so let's officially call this meeting to order for Wednesday, April the 2nd, 2025. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Convocation to be observed by a moment of silence. Please remain standing for the flag salutes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, very good. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Present.
Commissioner Wise.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Chairman Beatty.
Present. Next item.
County announcements.
Good morning, Nicole.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Nicole Gibbs of Strategic Communications. We're going to start off today with county good news. Today is the big reveal of the 2025 I Voted sticker. So I will ask the Election Commissioner Laura Rainwater to join me here at the podium.
Yeah, always an exciting day. Election Commissioner, welcome.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. It is an exciting day. Little bit of history for those of you that don't know. Last year, we kicked off the first ever I Voted sticker contest in the state of Kansas. We're getting some feedback here. And it was highly successful. We had over 127 entries last year. This year, we had over 200, about 215 entries from over 20 different schools, plus several from homeschooled students. You just had to be in grade 6 through 12 and live in Sedgwick County. It was a very stiff competition. We had some amazing entries. Judges, we had a panel of four judges, bipartisan panel of four judges. I want to give my thanks to them. They were Roman Rodriguez, Levi Mabe, Megan Radley, and Tara Clark. They came in and spent about two hours judging over 200 entries. And they finally, it was a tough decision, but they finally arrived at the three finalists, and eventually, the first place winner. The first place winner will have their sticker made into stickers for this year's primary and general election. I got to give thanks not only to our comms team here at Sedgwick County, who helped us kick this off, but also all the teachers who incorporated this sticker contest into their curriculum. It is so important that we engage our students and our youth and our future voters, and get them engaged in elections, and this is just one way to do it. I will say that other counties in Kansas have now picked up on this contest. Johnson County, Wyandotte County, Riley County, Ellis County, and others have all reached out and are interested in doing a contest very similar to ours. So it's pretty exciting. So, without further ado, I want to introduce our three finalists, and then I will reveal the third place, second place, and first place entries. Our three finalists are, in no particular order, Ruby Dalbum, a 9th grader, homeschooled St. Michael's Academy; Riley McAllister, an 8th grader from Derby North Middle School; and Madeline Smith, a 12th grader from Valley Center High School. So as I call your name, we're going to do third place first, come up and get a picture. And I first want to say, all three of you guys, this is a huge honor to be one of the top three. If you could have seen the entries. Yes. While I wish all three of you could win, and you guys are going to see their artwork is simply amazing, there can only be one winner. But, thank you for participating, and I hope you will do it again next year, and get your friends to do it too. This is a great way to get our youth involved in elections. Okay, third place, Ruby Dalbum. She is a 9th grader from St. Michael's Academy Homeschool. Come on up. I love her sticker. It truly encompasses Sedgwick County. You've got the Epic Center, you've got Exploration Place, Aviation, you've got the Keeper, the wheat fields for rural Sedgwick County, just an amazing design.
Beautiful.
It is beautiful. Way to go, Ruby. In second place, an 8th grader from Derby North Middle School, Riley McAllister. What I love about this, not only is this Sedgwick County, but the sunflower, the state of canvas, and obviously, our flag, it's beautiful design, I love it. And our first place winner, she is a 12th grader from Valley Center High School, Madeline Smith. Congratulations.
That's great.
Madam, would you like to say a few words? You don't have to, but they would love to hear from you. Come on up.
I'd just like to say thank you to Ms. Arzola for supporting me, and this being our first year with this project, it was a fun experience, and I wasn't expecting to even be here. And my family for always supporting me, and my boyfriend Cameron for supporting me, and I just love you all. Thank you.
That's great.
So, in my haste to get here and get everything set up, I have certificates for all three of you winners framed. I forgot them, but I will deliver them to you at your school. So maybe your school can do a presentation. So again, congratulations to all three of our winners.
That's great. Laura, we want to, on behalf of the commission, we want to thank you for the initiative to do this. You started it last year, and you're right, there are other counties across the state are now trying to follow your lead in this deal, and it really does engage a younger generation into the voting process and what this looks like. And this sticker will be delivered to, how many, well, we have how many registered voters in Sedgwick County, and they're going to be voting in this election? This will be a city election in '25. So, thousands upon thousands of people that vote.
Over 100,000.
Over 100,000 people are going to have this sticker. Really, really cool. Okay, questions or comments from the commission? Anybody?
I don't know how you chose.
I did not choose. This is not, so the bipartisan team of four are members of our community. They have nothing to do with the election office. They have, all four had backgrounds in the art industry, from graphic design to different art medium. I am not an art teacher, and I don't pretend to be one, and that's why I let the experts decide.
Good. And can you elaborate again? We had some teachers that were actually making this part of the curriculum?
Absolutely. I had teachers that submitted 50 entries from multiple classes. Derby North was one, Derby Middle School was one. I don't want to name all the schools, because I'll forget some, and then I'll be chastised for forgetting which schools. But, yeah, multiple schools, classes, yeah.
Well, thank you to those teachers for engaging this process. We greatly appreciate it.
And for those of you that are here, we did, we, out of the 215 entries we received, we chose about 50 that we laminate, because I don't know if you've ever been in the historic courthouse, but the walls in the historic courthouse are kind of plain, and we brought some color. We like to display all of these entries. So there's 50 or so entries that have been laminated out in the lobby up here, that you can see that will be on display for the whole year at the historic courthouse. And it's a good representative from all the schools that participated.
Okay. Okay, we would like to get pictures with you. In fact, if we could, there's two proclamations on the schedule today too, so if we can wait until after the proclamations, I know some of you got to get back to school, and I appreciate that. Daniel, I know you got to go back to school and celebrate your birthday. But I want to make sure that we can get, we want to celebrate all three entries with the pictures and publicize that. So if we can wait until, if it's okay, if you can wait until after the two proclamations, then we'll all go out on the stairs and do all three pictures together. I think that would be wonderful, if that's okay? Okay? Laura, wonderful job.
Thank you.
Okay? Nicole, anything else?
Yes, thank you for waiting. It's hard to go after that, but we will. I just want to remind everyone that Sedgwick County is currently under the state of Kansas imposed burn ban. From now through April 30th, open burning is prohibited in Sedgwick County to protect our air quality. Only controlled burns with a permit will be allowed in agricultural settings to eliminate weeds and nourish the soil. You can find more information at sedgwickcounty.org/fire. We also wanted to remind everyone that Sedgwick County Health Department is hosting another walk-in measles vaccination clinic, that's the MMR vaccine, on Saturday, April 5th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Health Department East 9th location. The clinic is open to everyone 12 months and older, with no out-of-pocket cost and no appointment needed. Visit sedgwickcounty.org/health for more information. And that's all I have for today.
Okay, very good. Commissioners, any questions for Nicole? Okay, once again, thank you, appreciate it. Madam Clerk, next item.
Public Agenda.
Okay, no one has signed up for Public Agenda today, so we'll keep moving. Madam Clerk, next item.
Proclamations. Item A, proclamation declaring National Child Abuse Prevention Month.
Okay, we have two wonderful proclamations, the first being a proclamation of Sedgwick County, Kansas. Whereas children are our nation's most vulnerable members, as well as our nation's most valuable resources, helping to shape the future of Sedgwick County. And whereas positive childhood experiences, such as loving caregivers and safe, stable, and nurturing relationships, play a vital role in helping children thrive by mitigating trauma and the negative impact of adverse childhood experiences. And whereas strengthening families through access to concrete economic, social, and community-based supports reduces the likelihood of abuse and neglect, and ensures children have foundation for lifelong well-being. And whereas effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of the partnerships created between child welfare professionals, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies, and families. And whereas, we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse, and contribute to promoting the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, and nurturing environment. Now, therefore, be resolved that I, Chairman Ryan Beatty, and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners, do hereby recognize April 2025 as National Child Abuse Prevention Month. We recognize this in Sedgwick County, and we urge all citizens to recognize this month by dedicating ourselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and families. Commissioners, you've heard the proclamation, I move to approve it as read. Second. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner. Chairman Beatty.
Aye. And here to accept this proclamation is Rachel Harper of the Kansas Children's Service League. Hi, Rachel, good morning.
Good morning. So, thank you Chairman Beatty and the commission for inviting us today, and for signing the proclamation declaring Child Abuse Prevention Month. As you said, I'm Rachel Harper, the Assistant Director of Prevent Child Abuse, Kansas Chapter at Kansas Children's Service League. Kansas was the first state to have its own chapter 49 years ago, and KCSL is also the Kansas Chapter of Circle of Parents and a multi-state system of Healthy Families America. April has been recognized as Child Abuse Prevention Month since 1983. The blue pinwheel that the commissioners have, yep, became the symbol for child abuse prevention in 2008. The pinwheel represents the healthy, happy childhoods that we all desire to see. Each year, KCSL coordinates statewide activities and offers support to local community efforts to help spread awareness, foster community action, and promote policies that ensure the safety and well-being of children and families. The theme for Child Abuse Prevention Month this year is Powered by Hope, Strengthened by Prevention. We at KCSL are committed to a future where every child grows up safe, loved, and full of hope. Prevention is a shared responsibility, and families, communities, policymakers, and organizations must work together to provide economic and social support, including affordable childcare, paid leave, and financial stability, community-based solutions ensuring access to local resources and networks, and stronger prevention policies with investments that uplift families before harm occurs. Prevention isn't just about avoiding harm, it's about creating opportunities for families to thrive. Positive childhood experiences, including stable relationships and nurturing environments, help children thrive and mitigate adverse childhood experiences, or ACIS. Prevention is hard work, but is also hard work. To celebrate Child Abuse Prevention Month, you can help plant a pinwheel garden, a visual reminder of the world that we want for all children to grow up happy, healthy, and prepared to succeed. You can also join us in wearing blue on Friday, April 4th, for National Wear Blue Day. You can participate in, you can participate in Prevent Child Abuse America's Nationwide Digital Action Day on April 9th by contacting members of Congress to advocate for increased support and funding for child abuse prevention programs. Please reach out to Kansas Children's Service League for details. Also, follow KCSL on social media. We will use the hashtag Powered by Hope for all Child Abuse Prevention Month posts. And now, at this time, I would like to ask the members of the Wichita Coalition for Child Abuse Prevention to please introduce themselves and their agency.
Hi, I'm Kim Osborne, I'm with Kansas Children's Service League.
Lori Chandler with Child Advocacy Center of Sedgwick County. So I have a little bit of a two dual role today. So I'm Ashley Coleman, I'm the mayor of Keachai, but I am also the Support Services Program Administrator for the Department for Children and Families.
Good morning. Diana Shun, I'm the CEO of the Child Advocacy Center of Sedgwick County.
Good morning. John Castelaw, Family Resource Center Director at the Urban League of Kansas.
Good morning. Jay Hedrick, Executive Director for Gathered.
Good morning. Kim Gerstenkorn, Executive Director of CASA of Sedgwick County.
Hello. Sarah Robinson, Drug Endangered Children of Sedgwick County.
Good morning. Jenny Williams, Volunteer Coordinator for CASA of Sedgwick County.
Hello. Danielle Thompson, Development Director for CASA of Sedgwick County.
That's beautiful.
So thank you again, and we'd be happy to take any questions.
Okay, Rachel, thank you. That whole collective, that all the collaborative people are real heroes in this community. So, we're grateful for all the work that they do. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Commissioner Meitzner.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Rachel, for, and all that group, that's impressive, and it makes us all feel a little better that we've got quite a, quite a cross-section of many agencies focused on, on this child abuse deal. So, and thank, so thank you for being here. And as a side note, I also understand that today is Bring Your Mom to Work Day, and so our county clerk.
It is.
Our county clerk brought her mom.
Yes, she brought her mom to work day.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, for doing that.
That's good. Very cool. Commissioner Howell.
You know, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've done this proclamation, I think, every year, and I think, I'm glad, I'm glad we recognize those that are trying to address the issues of child abuse, however that happens in the community. So, just want to say thank you for what you do, all the people that came up here, you are leaders in your organizations, and I'm very, very grateful for what you do. I do want to highlight, I think, a couple of them spoke briefly. I think we, a lot of us know what C, Child Advocacy Center does. A lot of us may, there's great descriptions up here for KCSL, kind of what they do. One thing I think is not understood very well is what CASA's do, and I think there was two people here talking about CASA. As well, I'm going to make a call out to the community that may be listening, there are, there's a huge need for people to step up and volunteer to be case, am I using the word case or CASA?
CASA.
CASA. Advocates, if you will. And what they do is they partner with a child in the, in the court system, if you will, to help them, it's almost like, they're not an attorney, they're a friend. They're a friend of the child, helps them in a, in a court process. And so, there's a huge need for that. I can tell you that, I've talked to people who are CASA volunteers, it's very rewarding, and it's very difficult, but there is enormous need. And I can't stress that enough, there's, I don't know what the numbers are today, but I would say, we need 100 of them right now. And I think if we had 100 more, that would be wonderful. And I think there's, one of the things that anybody could do that wants to get involved, and it'd be just a few hours a week, a few hours a week to do, to do what a CASA is supposed to do, and it would make a huge difference in the lives of a, of a child. And so, I just want to advocate for that one specifically, because I'm aware there's a huge need, and I think it's, it's not understood what that is, and I want to make sure people know that that's an opportunity. If they want to do a CASA, is there a website that you can just yell it out?
Yeah, casasedgwickcounty.org.
Okay, casasedgwickcounty.org has all the information, so please check that out. Thank you for the chance to speak, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Also, Rachel, I want to take a point of privilege. Diana, would you mind, I would like to ask you a specific question, bring Diana back up. She's CEO of Child Advocacy Center. The county commission in Sedgwick County has tried to really support this campaign that you're under, to really expand what you do over at the Child Advocacy Center. Would you just take a minute maybe, and just say, remind the community all that's happening at the Child Advocacy Center, and maybe an update on your campaign?
Sure. Yeah, good morning. Grateful to be here with you today in particular, and so, we are obviously providing services with many other partners in the community, but our services specifically focus on advocacy, therapy, case coordination, and community education. And we see approximately 2,000 children a year, and that need continues to grow each year. And we have the opportunity then to be able to work collaboratively with our partners that are within the building, that we are all co-located together. Our goal is to be able to have a one location that children can come to and their families to be able to receive services when there's a child abuse investigation, and then to be able to receive those support services and wraparound services throughout, and certainly utilize and welcome all of our partner agencies then that we can utilize within the community, and try not to duplicate any of the services that are already available. So, it's an extremely important part of that process to be able to get success for families, and to allow them to be able to start that healing process very early on.
Thank you. And if people are curious about the campaign that you're under right now, it's a capital campaign.
Yes.
To accomplish these things, where could they find that information?
Yeah, if they want to contact us at the Child Advocacy Center, we have a long email address, but it's cacscansas.org, and they can get additional information or contact me directly, and we would be glad to talk to them. We are continuing to move forward with that campaign. We have the opportunity to grow all of our services, and specifically see the need for growth in our advocacy and therapy programming, as families are challenged when they come in with, to see us for a variety of different reasons, and so that is one of the ways that we can connect with those families and provide them support services as early as possible. So we're excited about that growth opportunity. We know the need exists in the community. My mantra is, sometimes people are very worried that our numbers continue to increase, and that there are so many cases of abuse, but the reality is, is abuse is occurring, I would much rather people have the opportunity to come in and receive the services than not. And so, numbers that are growing, I don't know that we can indicate necessarily what that means. I would hope through our prevention and awareness efforts, that that means that people are aware that abuse is occurring, and that they're more likely to report it.
Wow.
And that's what we're going to stick with, so all of this is a big part of that.
Thank you for the work you do, and all the agencies that are here today, thank you. You're heroes for these children and these families, we appreciate it. Any chance I get to tell your story, I want to be able to do that, so, sorry for putting you on the spot, but.
Appreciate that, thank you very much.
I appreciate you coming.
We appreciate your support very much.
Very much, okay, thank you. Okay, Rachel, hang tight, and then we'll get some pictures afterwards, so thank you again. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Item B, proclamation declaring YEP Financial Literacy Month.
Okay. Ask Commissioner Wise if she would read this proclamation.
Thank you for the opportunity to read this. Okay. This proclamation is for Youth Educational Empowerment Program, also known as YEP. A Wichita nonprofit organization founded in 1997 teaches financial literacy to those from birth to 24 years of age. And whereas, the staff and volunteers for YEP place a special emphasis in lower to moderate income communities, thus empowering them to set goals in order to be financially fit for a most productive future. And whereas, YEP believes that financial literacy should be a core subject taught in the beginning of one's educational journey, so that everyone will have the knowledge and resources to avoid bad financial pitfalls, and that our economy will have a better tomorrow. And whereas, YEP has further broadened educational training and experiences to include training and courses in journalism, photography, video production, design, and videography, in order to enhance opportunities for youth. And whereas, due to its success and demand, YEP is expanding their, their facilities and partnering with other local businesses that will further enhance future possibilities for our community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, as the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim April 20, 2025 as YEP Financial Literacy Month, and encourage all citizens to know the lifetime importance of managing personal finances. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adopt this proclamation as read.
I'll second the motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner. Chairman Beatty.
Aye.
Okay, and to accept this proclamation is Marquise Murphy, the CEO and President of Youth Educational Empowerment Program at YEP.
Okay, I'm not sure I saw Marquise. Is anyone here from YEP that would like to accept the proclamation? No big deal if not, we'll make sure we get ahold of them, I know where to find them, so we'll get ahold of them. Oh, here.
She said she'll do it.
There you are.
Thank you.
Well, you know, I, this is really off the cuff, I'm just here because I should need a mic.
I'm Sarah Robinson. I really have nothing to do with YEP, except I really, really support and appreciate what they do. They do amazing work with financial literacy. They started out in our schools, now they're everywhere. They've got Roger Dollar, and Sammy Cent, and all these people running around trying to teach kiddos and their families about finances. And they're expanding their purview, not for me to say, but you'll hear more about what they're doing in the community to support children. So, YEP is great, and it's kind of a funny name, but everybody really needs to know what that stands for. Thank you.
That's right, Sarah. Thank you so much for doing that. So we'll make sure we get ahold of the representatives of YEP and get this proclamation to them. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to give a shout out to Marquise, Don Cano, and everybody over there at YEP. I've been out there several times, what they've done on Town West, and followed them for several years. Financial literacy, part of it is so important, and they demonstrate it through, through the training that they do, and teaching real-life skills, so we need more of that, and I appreciate everything that they do for us.
Okay, very good, appreciate that, Commissioner. Other questions or comments? Okay, we'll make sure we get ahold of Don and Marquise, and make sure they get the proclamation, and we'll continue to celebrate them today. So, why don't we pause for a bit, and we'll go out into the hallway here on the stairs and take pictures with everyone that was with the I Voted sticker campaign, and then also those that are here for the Child Abuse Proclamation. So, give us five minutes, we'll be right back. So give us five minutes, we'll be right back. Okay, we are back. Thank you for the patience. A couple of these proclamations today and then the "I Voted" sticker, what great momentum and energy in the room today. So grateful for the opportunity to celebrate those organizations. Madam Clerk, back to business we go. Next item.
Appointments. Item C, resolution reappointing Rita Severt to the Cedric County Advisory Council on Aging and Physical Disabilities.
Okay, Mr. Wagner.
Thank you, Chairman. Justin Wagner, County Counselor. As Madam Clerk read, there's Item C that I'd propose, if you're okay with it, Chairman, to combine with Item D. Both of these are resolutions reappointing, as Madam Clerk read, Item C, Rita Severt as Commissioner Wise's appointment to the Cedric County Advisory Council on Aging and Physical Disabilities. And then Item D is a resolution reappointing Madison Schreiner to the same council by Chairman Beatty. The recommended action is to adopt both of the resolutions.
Okay, Commissioners, no qualms here on combining Items C and D. Any questions or comments? Okay, I'd be happy to make a motion. I move to approve the resolutions reappointing Rita Severt and Madison Schreiner to the Cedric County Advisory Council on Aging and Physical Disabilities.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Blubow.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. And I know Madison is here. Is Rita here, by chance?
She's here.
Okay. Deputy County Clerk is here. We'll swear in, Madison.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Kansas and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Sedgwick County Aging and Physical Disabilities Advisory Council, so help me God. I do. Thank you so much. Have a good time.
Madison, congratulations and thank you for serving. Any question or any comments?
I'd just like to say thank you again for the opportunity to advocate for senior and disability services. I appreciate that.
I'd like the public to know Madison actually is the Director Role of the Park City Senior Center. And you guys have a new project coming on board, don't you? Any updates?
We have a brand-new senior center opening up next year. So it's a very exciting time.
A big, beautiful building. So you guys do a great job up there. Thank you for serving this capacity. It means a lot to me and our district. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. All right, Madam Clerk, next item.
New Business. Item E, Island Annexation Request by the City of Valley Center pursuant to the City of Valley Center Resolution 779-25.
Okay, good morning Samantha.
Samantha Seang, Assistant County Counselor, presenting the City of Valley Center's Island Annexation Request. KSA 15-520C governs the requirements for island annexation. Subsection A requires the land is within the same county as the city, which it is. The owner or the owners of the land petition for or consent in writing to the annexation of the land, which the owner did. And she is here today to answer any questions, if you have any of her. And then the B O C C, by a two-thirds vote of the members, find and determine that the annexation will not hinder and prevent growth and development of the area or that any other city within Sedgwick County. Subsection C requires the B O C make the required determination within 30 days following receipt of the resolution. Here's a timeline for you. The property owner requested Valley Center to island annex her property on February 5th. On March 4th, the city passed Resolution 779-25 requesting P O C C to conduct an inquiry and make the findings required by its statute. On March 5th, the city notified the county councillor's office of this requested annexation, and we are here today, 28 days later. Here is a picture of the proposed annex area. It's a little bit under nine acres. And here is a picture. You can see Valley Center is in the pink area and the proposed island annexation is in red. And as with all island annexations, there's no connection to the Valley Center. The subject site is currently undeveloped and it's designated use as agriculture. The owner has indicated and intend to develop the site with five single-family homes and possibly an event center. And here's a bigger picture where you can tell that in the yellow are residential areas and then the proposed annex area is right next to a residential to the east. Here's a pitch aerial photo, close up, and you can see there's a house right nearby. Then this is a wide shot of the area and the Valley Center. The planning department, evaluation of this request, and they found that it meets the, includes additional land identified in their expanded planning area. The subject site as well as surrounding parcels are platted and are sectioned off for large lot residential development. They also concluded that this is consistent with the Wichita-Sedgwick County Community Investments Plan from 2015-2035, and it is also consistent with the urban growth area for Valley Center. No other city in Sedgwick County has identified the annexation parcel as part of its future urban growth area. In terms of services, upon annexation, the city will be responsible for providing the following services: water, sewer, trash, stormwater, and police. Now, water and sewer, it's my understanding that the city has no immediate plans to tie the subject property to its water lines, and it has told this to the property owner, and she has indicated that she is okay with this. The city has a franchise agreement for trash and stormwater services, and they will invoice the property owner for these services. Currently, the sheriff's county, the county sheriff's department provides police services once upon annexation. That responsibility will be the Valley Center's police department. In terms of services for fire and road maintenance, they will remain the same. The City of Valley Center's Fire Department currently provides service to the subject area, and the Cedric County Fire Department provides mutual responses for that area. Road maintenance, Cedric County will continue to maintain 85th Street and 55th Street as that is part of the unincorporated area of Cedric County. It is my recommendation today that you find that the proposed island annexation by the City of Valley Center, based on Resolution Number 779-25, that it does not hinder the proper growth and development of the area and does not hinder the proper growth and develop, development of any other city in Cedric County. I can stand for questions.
Okay, Samantha, thank you for that presentation. Also, thank you to the property owner for being here today. We appreciate that. Commissioner, any questions or comments? Okay, a couple of questions on my end. Can you help us understand, and for the public's understanding, what is the scope of decision-making that we get to make here? What exactly do we have to consider on an island annexation, and is it different from a zoning case?
For island annexations, as shown on the screen, the two main focus is whether it, does it hinder the proper growth and development of the area, and does it hinder the proper growth and development of any other city in Cedric County? In terms of whether there's a zoning issues, that comes later, and that's, so it would be the next steps, and you would not have to consider it. There is case law that indicates that you should take a look at the land usage, but even if you took a look at the land usage in this particular instance, the area isn't that particularly large, so there wouldn't likely be any burden on the local utilities or resources, and it wouldn't likely adversely impact utilities or growth of the surrounding area or cities in general.
Okay, that's helpful. There have been a few of the neighbors that have reached out with some questions regarding what's going on in this area, the potential land use that could be coming after an island, and expressed a little bit of concern. So what I've explained to them, and I'd like the public to understand, and also the property owner to understand as well, is although we may consider future land use, the real specific scope of what we're considering on, does this annexation, does it or does it not hinder the proper growth and development of the area? And any type of land use discussion really is a second conversation that would then go to the Valley Center Planning Commission and not the Sedgwick County Planning Commission. And if what could happen, based upon the landowners, the property owners' description of what could come, be it residential or even possibly an event center, it's staff recommendation that that would not hinder the proper growth or the development of the area. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Okay, that helps me understand really the context of the decision on an island annexation. Okay, any other questions or comments? Commissioner Howe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I apologize if you already stated this, but the current, the current use today, is it considered rural residential today?
It is designated as for agricultural use.
Okay. And what will be the zoning classification once this is inside the city?
It would remain the same until the city changes that designation.
So that's a future action?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions or comments? I think I have what I need. So I will make a motion to approve the proposed annexation in finding that it will not hinder or prevent the proper growth and development of the area or any of the other unincorporated city located in Sedgwick County. A second. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Blubow.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Samantha, thank you. Thank you, City of Valley Center. Thank you to the property owner for being here today. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Item F, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, Regular Meeting on March 27, 2025.
Okay, you're not Joe Tompkins.
Keep telling you I'm better looking.
Yes, yes.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, Lee Barrier, Purchasing Department. The regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts of March 27, 2025 resulted in two items which require your approval. Item number one, 2025 Asphalt Rejuvenation Project, R175 for Public Works. And the recommendation is to accept a bid from Cutler Repaving Incorporated in the amount of $1,151,208.35. Our second item was South Central Regional Mental Health Hospital Building Commissioning, and that recommendation was to accept the proposal from K H R Rumah and Associates Company in the amount of $435,870, and to establish contract pricing as detailed in the proposal. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval of these items.
Okay, Lee, thank you. Commissioners, any questions or comments on these two items on bid board? Okay, seeing none, I move to approve the Board of Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting on March 27, 2025. A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Blubow.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, Lee, thank you again. Appreciate it. Madam Clerk, next item.
Consent Agenda.
Manager Stoltz.
Good morning, Chairman. Commissioner Tom Stoltz, County Manager's Office, recommending approval of Consent Items G through M on regular business today.
Okay, Commissioners, we've all been briefed on the Consent Agenda. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I will move to approve Consent Agenda Items G through M. A motion and a second. A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Blubow. Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, very good. Next item, please.
Legislative Issues.
Hi, Tanya Cole.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Tanya Cole, Assistant County Manager. So I have a few updates. They're not going to be much different than what we talked about last Friday at Agenda Review, but I do want to provide just a few updates. Legislature-
Tanya Cole, Assistant County Manager. So I have a few updates. They're not going to be much different than what we talked about last Friday at Agenda Review, but I do want to provide just a few updates. Legislature, right now, they are in adjournment, and they will be back April 10th to address vetoes, and I think that's scheduled for a couple of days. House Bill 2022, that's our election bill, that's amended to hold elections to the first Tuesday in March and for primary and general elections. That has passed. Senate Bill 4, we've not really talked about this, but I thought it was worthwhile to just mention, this requires all advanced voting ballots to be returned by 7:00 PM on Election Day. That was passed through a veto override. House, let me skip. I want to kind of do this in a different order. I'm going to talk about the bills that have passed and then talk about unfortunately some bills that probably won't pass. I talked about this at Agenda Review regarding property tax. Senate Bill 35, that passed, and what's included in that is a 1.5 state mill levy reduction. So that's what we've seen as far as regarding property tax. House Bill 2088, we've talked about this. This is the fast-track permits. This passed. We had some concern regarding zoning cases, but that that language was pulled out of the fast-track permits, so as far as we are concerned, there's no concerns with this bill. House Bill 2152, this is our bankers' bill. This passed, and as far as I know, the language that is in this bill, this is good for us because Brent Shelton, as you're aware, he worked on this bill along with the bankers. So that's a good bill for the county and for municipalities. House Bill 2365, this is the South Central Regional Mental Health Hospital. This bill passed. Unfortunately, I'm going to talk about some bills that is most likely not going to pass, as I mentioned last Friday, and we talked to Jason on Monday, and it's his feeling on this is that we had talked about Friday that they may discuss this as they come back, but his feeling is that they probably most likely will only address vetoes when they come back for the two days that they're back. So that is House Bill 2377, that's our sales tax bill. This got lumped in with CCR 2275. So what he did say on that is if if they talk about the Finney County portion of this bill, there's a tax portion of that related to Finney County in the CCR 2275, if they do bring that back up, it's possible that our sales tax portion of that bill could get passed. But again, that's if they bring this up during veto session, and that's still left to be unknown. So most likely, we could not see that pass. House Bill 2331, that's our cremains bill. He said it's we're probably not going to see that pass this year, so he said the good news on that is we're in a good place for next year, and we could possibly make this effective for February or July of next year, just because we're in such a good place on where we are with the bill, so we'll fast-track that for next year. And then Senate Bill 119, that's our treasurer bill. He did really feel that this probably will not go anywhere this year, so but he did say that was good policy, and legislators did feel this was good policy, and hopefully that will be discussed next year. And then Commissioner Howell, House Bill 2329, that's our juvenile justice bill, still has some challenges, could possibly be brought up in veto, but again, that's something that we most likely won't see until next year. So that's kind of where we are at with the legislative update. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Tanya, thank you for that. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Not much change from the Friday Agenda Review.
Yeah.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Yeah, Tanya, thanks again, and our thanks to our lobbyists that worked, and thanks, Commissioner Howell, for spending a lot of time and research. It's kind of a team effort to, well, I thought we had a few things at the finish line, but in haste, the legislative session wanted to end earlier or as planned, and so we kind of got cut out on a couple of things we thought were at the finish line, so but they'll be hopefully they can be at the first part of next session next year, and maybe they can I think there's we heard and Commissioner Howell can maybe confirm some things have already been kind of vetted can be introduced early and can maybe get approved before the session really gets in full gear. So hopefully, a couple of those things that we've got between the cremains and even the treasurer's bill could survive better. But thank you, everybody, for being involved this session, so.
Very good. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this not being an election year is an opportunity. All of these bills that we talked about that are below, again, they haven't advanced as far as we would like, we have I would give the legislature a break here, but I think that sometime later this summer or in the fall, we ought we need to, I guess, circle back to the legislators and I guess remind them why these bills are important. I'm a bit disappointed that, again, I think Cedric County is exceptional in that we have excellent lobbyist team, and we have a good staff that does a good job getting the data to the right people at the right time. We've been very reasonable what we're asking for, but this is, I think, the least successful session we've had in a long time. We got one bill that we created, if you will, House Bill 2022, which I'm very proud of. That's the one bill I think that's the the one thing we got done that really came out of Cedric County. These other bills, we didn't generate. They're bills of interest, but they're not really our bills that we initiated. So we have, again, at least these four bills that are that are kind of stagnant at the moment, but I don't think any of them are actually dead. We just need to do some more work. And I would tell you that, again, like on House Bill 2329, the House is really very much in favor of that bill. It had a very large majority of members in the House that supported that, and the cremains bill, in my opinion, is non-controversial. It could almost go on consent. It's really not it's not something I think it will have any reason not to pass that bill. It just they just didn't have time. I'll tell you what happened, if you were watching the legislature last Thursday, as they were passing Senate Bill 125 in the House and then the Senate, there was also efforts to pass something on property taxes, and I think the Senate especially got very frustrated. The House wasn't going to move towards the Senate, and I understand the reasons why. Actually, I kind of agree with them, but the Senate, I think, became very frustrated. And actually, what ended up happening is the Senate just adjourned. As soon as they passed the budget bill, they walked away from 10 other bills. There were 10 other bills up on the up for debate that day, and they walked away from 10 bills. So I don't know what the status of those 10 bills is now, and I assume that they're still alive, and I think they're important. They wouldn't have been on the agenda that day had they not been important. When the House finally did adjourn at about 11:40 about 11:40 PM on Thursday, they also walked away from about 10 bills. So there's roughly 20 bills between the House and Senate that have gotten to the point where they're this is through the conference committee report process. It's the final it's the final vote before it goes to the governor's desk, and 20 bills got to that point and then got stuck because I think the two bodies got frustrated. So those bills, I hope we could come back and see those 20 bills reconsidered again, hopefully in January, and get those to move forward. And I think we have some opportunity on these on at least these four bills to continue working. I would encourage us to be aware of our platform and continue to engage our legislative friends and to work these bills in the off-session so that next January, we can get the ball rolling again. So overall, this session, in my opinion, has not been a good session. It's one of the least productive I've seen, and it's issue with property taxes, I think, and I mentioned to Lindsay, I think we we got lucky. They did not pass something that was detrimental to Cedric County governance, if you will, but the shot the shot across the bow, I felt it, and they had more guns in the barrel. So we need to be ready for that conversation's going to be ramped up. In fact, there's still a possibility they would run a constitutional amendment during the veto session. I know that's a real that's a real issue, and if they can find something between the House and Senate that they think would pass, I would not put it past them to make that the last bill before they adjourn on the 11th. They'll probably adjourn on the 11th. So I think an amendment might still be in the in the future of this session, possibly not, but if not, it will be back next year. And I think we know what kind of things we're looking towards. And so with that, I would ask my colleagues to consider some self-imposed guardrails to hopefully impress upon the legislature. We don't need them to pass a state law that takes our power away because we're doing the good things that they believe are right, and we're doing it on our own. I think the policy we can create that essentially how we manage our budget, how we manage our tax dollars, if they would if they would be impressed with our our discipline, maybe it's possible they would not need to pass legislation to force us to do it without our without our inputs. So I think we need to have that discussion as a commission here. And anyway, I thank you, Tanya, for all you did this year. I really appreciate your good work.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Very good. Tanya, I echo that. Thank you again for all the work on the legislative stuff. A few more weeks, and then you'll and then we'll pause for a little bit, but thank you to yourself, your team, finance and legal for all the work done here. Okay, thanks. Madam Clerk, next item.
Committee Reports.
Okay, Commissioners, any committee reports you'd like to publicly report?
Well.
Mr. Meitzner?
Not to circumvent anybody else mentioning, but we attended the 25-year celebration yesterday of Exploration Place. Very impressive, and Chairman Beatty was asked to make a few statements. He did a nice job and is well-attended, and they have about a 25 it's funny, they said a 25-minute video for 25 years, trying to put that history into that. It's a really good video, and I'm going to encourage that if we can get our hands on that with our comms department to to post that as well. It is, you know, it's 25 minutes long. It's a small movie, but it's really it's very good, and I thank everybody for being there and participating, and it's good history of that. And so I just thank you all for being there. If you want to say anything.
Yeah, it was an incredible ceremony last night, the 25-year anniversary. Deputy County Manager Tim Kaufman was there as well with us, and it was good to see the video, to see all that went into that decision for launching Exploration Place and the moving of McLean Boulevard and how challenging that was and the political will it took in hiring the architect, the world-renowned architect to do this, and now how that building has been a design that has been reflected across the country and across the world in so many ways. It was really an incredible evening. Definitely appreciate not only where Expression Place has been, but where it's going to. We also gave details about how close they are in the EP2 initiative. It's a $27 million initiative. I think Adam Smith, CEO, the director over there, had indicated they were at $24 million, so they're almost to the finish line of the EP2 initiative, which will completely change the landscape of the riverfront, McLean Boulevard, but also what that museum does in this community. So it was a great night. Appreciate everybody that was there, from the public and the representation here at the commission. So thank you, Commissioner Meitzner. Appreciate that. Anything else under committee reports? Go ahead.
If I can, April 1st is a is a day of of recognition throughout the country with some fun, and with that, I'd like to propose a proclamation for Cedric County, whereas and we can we don't have to approve it, or we can approve it anyway. A proclamation of Cedric County, whereas Jim Howell has been trying to be liked since 2015. And whereas April 1st is a special day filled with fun and jocularity, therefore be it resolved that the county commission does hereby proclaim Jim Howell on April 1st, Jim Howell Cedric County Day of Visibility and Recognition Day, and encourage all citizens to celebrate with Jim Howell by implementing some tomfoolery yesterday as much as possible. And with that, I'm not going to make a motion to approve.
I would make that motion, but I don't think I'll get a second. Maybe I will. Just in all seriousness, Chairman, if you don't mind.
Please.
You know, Pete and I get along pretty well. We didn't always get along very well, but I think we get along great, and he's he wants to be the master of jocularity, if you don't know that. I've been trying to challenge him a little bit, and so we talked about what should we do about, you know, April 1st, and then we thought a proclamation about about me would be appropriate. So I actually wrote that and gave it to him and asked him to read that this morning. So no, Pete did nothing wrong. I actually thought it was fun, and I actually asked him to do that. And I would make that motion, but I guess I won't. Never mind. I'll let it go.
That's good. Very good. Okay, anything else under committee reports? Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Other.
Okay, under other. I would like to share, and the Wichita Business Journal this last week handed out some honors to those that are called Innovative Awards, and the Cedric County IT Department was a recipient of one of these innovation awards, and it was for a specific project that I want to make sure the public is aware of this project in this specific link on our cedriccounty.org website. It's a community dashboard, and the IT Department was given this innovation award for everything that's gone into that, and it shows this dashboard. You can click on the link. The dashboard shows all types of metrics and data about public safety, our economy, transportation, mental health, cultural arts, elections, workforce, and on and on and on. There's several different things that you can actually pull up data, pull up metrics, real-time data of how our community is performing in some of these things. So I just wanted to congratulate again the team over at IT. Our director over there, Mike Elfer, has just recently retired. I guess this is the first week without Mike at the helm over there after many, many years of service here in Cedric County. So his team and to Mike, congratulations, and thanks again to the Wichita Business Journal for honoring all of the award winners, the innovation award winners, but specifically the IT Department from Cedric County. This dashboard brings transparency right to the surface. So I want to encourage you, those that are listening in the public, go to cedriccounty.org, click on the link right there on our homepage of the community dashboard, and take a peek at all these metrics. They really are quite fascinating. Spend quite a bit of time on there analyzing it. So again, congratulations to the IT Department. Okay, anything else under other? Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk, next item.
Executive Session.
Okay, we do have an executive session. Commissioner Meitzner?
Yes, we do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 45 minutes until 10:55. Let's call it 10:55, to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel related to a management position, and that the Board of County Commissioners return to this room from executive session at 10:55 AM.
Okay, that's a motion. I'll make a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Blubow.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, we will return at 10:55. Okay, we will return at 10:55. And we're going to...[393.78]
Okay folks, we are back. Caddis Commission meeting. A couple commissioners are still meeting but we do have a quorum so we're going to move this thing forward. There was no binding action taken in executive session so if there's anything else that needs to come before the commission?
No.
No more proclamations, huh? Very good. Okay, 10:56, we are adjourned.